Good morning. Welcome to Fort Mill's Town Council Regular Meeting, Monday morning, August 24th. We welcome you as you join us today. We will stand as our council for a pledge of allegiance. And Larry, would you offer the invocation this morning?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, as we gather here together representing our town, pray that you give wisdom to do the things right. We give you thanks for the blessings we have received, both as individuals and as a town. We pray that you would be with us as we go forward from this place. In our holy name we pray, amen.
Amen. Well, we have the distinct pleasure of having a full council today. I welcome everyone. We have Shontae Bowler with us, our manager, Davy Broom, and we're all thrilled to be here. Thanks to all. We will now take a look at council members. You've been provided the minutes of the August 10th, 2020 Town Council meeting. Do I have any changes, deletions, or additions?
I'm looking for approval.
I've got a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Uh-uh.
Okay, because we're all here, we should be able to vote in unison. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. And Virginia, that was a full count. Public comment. Pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter, except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting to maintain social distancing. Citizens will only be allowed into council chambers one at a time to give their comments. Davy, do we have anyone signed in?
No ma'am.
We do not have anyone in attendance this morning to provide public comments, so there are no presentations. We will move to our information discussion portion of our agenda. Item number one is the property tax reassessment, village rollback. Shontae Bowler is our expert on the topic. Good morning.
I love that.
Yes, ma'am, always.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. We wanted to bring this item before you this morning because during the budget workshop, management recommended that we move forward with the rollback calculation, which was 75.2 mils. But there seemed to be some additional discussion around perhaps utilizing your option with your CPI and percentage growth. So we wanted to try today to get some consensus or some direction from council as to what your pledge is because we do have to publicize the notice for first reading and public hearing, and the millage is contained within that advertisement. You will take your formal action when you, when we come to the budget process in terms of the millage order. But we wanted to get a feeling and some direction from council today so that I would know what to publish in the advertisement. If it changes after that at your wish, then that is fine, but I do want to be comfortable with what I am publishing in the advertisement.
Understood. For those that were unable to attend the budget meeting, what has occurred is that there is, there are a number of options for us as we proceed with our budget for the year. One of those options would be to stay with the current millage or to marry up the millage with staying with the current amount that everyone would pay in. Some of the decision making at this point is related to COVID. We have projections that we're not going to see the revenues generated that we have previously because there are many that are not working or that have lost their jobs. We recognize that. So we're working accordingly to ensure that we maintain the amount of money needed to operate the town, to try to keep our employees, and also not to overburden the taxpayer. On another side, we also recognize we have had, I believe, one tax increase in 20 years, and it was during a period of time we were in a crisis as a country. We certainly do not have the option to continue to pay our employees a living wage and to operate our town in a manner that everyone has grown to expect without increasing taxes at some point. Certainly my grocery bill and everything else goes up. I can't imagine everyone else is not doing the same. So this was intended this morning to give us as a council an opportunity to discuss, do we, do we want to take action that is available to us to do an increase in tax millage, or do we want to keep it as what was proposed in the budget so that our taxpayers would not see an increase? So this is a point in time for everyone to have an opportunity to discuss that. Comments?
So from our workshop meeting, Shontae, one of the things that was brought up was the reassessment from York County. Can you discuss how taxpayers may see changes in their tax bills even if we don't increase our taxes, or how their tax bills are going to change with the reassessment?
Their tax bill would, in essence, change because of the new reassessment value. But what the state law says is that we have to be able to generate the same revenue for next year as it would have been in this year had it not been for the reassessment. So that is what causes us by state law to perform this calculation. In doing so, we would be able to be what's called revenue neutral by rolling back our millage to 75.2 mils. In addition to that, the South Carolina Department of Revenue and Fiscal Affairs also performed the calculation to provide to us what our CPI is, and for those who don't know what that means, it's the consumer pricing debt, an issue to our growth here in Fort Mill. It is not, they are using somewhat dated information because it is not up to today's numbers, and part of what they pulled is from the census, and of course, that in itself is some dated information. But once they figured Fort Mills, our CPI was 1.81%, and our growth factor was 12.65%. So together, the state of South Carolina says you have a maximum cap that you can live within, not to exceed 14.46%. Now, if we were to exercise an entire 14.46%, that would bring us all the way back to 86 mils, which is where we currently are. But council has the option to increase millage anywhere between, anywhere up to 14.46%. And so in doing some of the calculations that you had asked for, it is now up to you guys to tell us which direction you would.
And Shontae, thank you for providing the calculations that were requested in our budget meeting to help us understand a little bit of what, you know, an average increase might look like. I think that's always helpful for us to have examples. You know, certainly, and to Lisa's point, I'm going to ask a question. Oh, our millage is based on, you know, what determination we make, and we're regulated to, to a certain degree. But for reassessment on property taxes, you know, because our property values continue to increase here in Fort Mill, even if we do the rollback, people may see an increase as it relates to the assessment on their home. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure because I think what Lisa's saying is, we can make a decision for the rollback, but people's taxes may go up because the reassessment will look at today's value of a home. And, you know, for some people that haven't seen, you know, a change in their home address for some years, you only see that change in tax when it is reassessed or when you sell it. So I, I think that's a very valid point to make, that you may see an increase on your tax bill even if we decide not to, to do an increase on our millage.
To your point, a lot of us have had increases in taxes over the years while we still, the town of Fort Mill has not changed and increased taxes from outside factors, whether it be the reassessment or the school district loans or other York County's funds, other forces that tie on that taxing system. It's not just the town of Fort Mill.
Correct. Correct. It's a moving target.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you like me to share one of those?
That'd be awesome.
Yes, ma'am, that would be awesome.
Okay, this is on a residential property, just on 75.2 mils itself, on a $300,000 home, the property tax would be, the property tax, well, rolling back would be revenue neutral. If we added, let's say, just the CPI, which is 1.8%, then that would yield a $17 increase. If we chose to go up to more of a mid-range, which would be about 80 mils, that would be $58. And if we went the full gamut, it would be $130.
Okay. Does everybody understand the figures and the concept?
This is the same, read from the same start?
Yes, what I said. Yes. 75.2 going up to 60, I would turn into 76.6, yielding an increase of $17. And then if we went from 75.2 to 80 mils, it's $58. If we went from 75.2 and remained at 86, which is where we are now, that would be $130. But that is the maximum cap of our spending.
How often can we do this? So how often can we look at raising the millage?
It's year-round. Do you have the opportunity to do that once a year?
So once the decision's made, we work stuff with it for a year.
Until the next year.
Okay.
What about business? Some of y'all are looking at that? Can you share that?
Yes, we did pick out a business on Main Street, and going from 75.2 to 76.6, which was just the CPI, $20. Going from 75.2 to 80 mils is $70. And then going from 75.2 to 86 mils is $159.
Well, in the-
27 and 159?
Sorry.
You said 27 and 159?
27 and 159.
With the absence of further comment, you know me, I'm going to fill the space. I think were we not in COVID, this would be an easy decision for council to make because, again, you know, our budgets increase just like everyone's home budget does. Cost is cost, and most entities and people want to improve what they do as they move forward, and the town is no different. You know, we certainly want to improve upon performance and, and what we provide. That oftentimes costs money. However, 2020 just keeps on giving, doesn't it? You know, this COVID situation, the pending hurricanes, two earthquakes in two weeks, you know, it's just, you never know, one day to the next, what to expect. And I feel certain there's not a person in our community that does feel the same way. So for my own personal standing, I have mentioned increasing taxes for a number of years, both as a councilwoman and as mayor, because we need to keep up. But this is, this is an odd time for us to be considering charging businesses and homes that are in jeopardy additional money. I know we've had to tighten the belt and do with less, and I'm grateful for what staff does. Boy, am I grateful. But I personally feel like, I'm, I'm good saying not this budget because of COVID, but I can promise you, should we return to our economic situation where we're growing and, and doing the right things, I will be the voice that says we must look at how we pay for things and work accordingly. We, we, we're going to have to have a tax increase. We're, we're going to have to. That is, that should have happened a long time ago so that people are not adjusted to seeing us continue to work with considerably less every year. So I, I personally feel like the circumstances put us in a, in a position that it's what's right.
Well, we're right now, small businesses don't really need to get, restaurants here don't need to have to pay more. I know it's not a whole lot more, but I think being sensitive. But as Mayor mentioned, for every house that comes online, there's an incremental cost associated with that unit, or for every business that comes online, and we can't keep as flatlining, not flatlining revenues, but running the town from a millage point or impact point, but everything needs to be looked at. Down the road, I'm, I'm, right now, I think it's a good time to be sensitive towards businesses and residential, you'll lost jobs, we'll take pay cuts, people been furloughed. But down the road, as the mayor mentioned, I do believe everything's got to be on the table. There's an incremental cost for every unit that comes online with what we've approved, so.
But that house is paying a necessary taxes too.
It is, but when you have thousands of houses that haven't been built, just like you worked in a brick factory, for every brick that you got to produce, there's associated costs with that too. And I mean, you can't, I'm just using that as an example. We have approved houses that haven't been built yet. For every house, they're, they will be paying taxes. They will. But you can't just keep it that way for the next 30 years and we need to build fire stations. It works.
But I, I do think as a voice of reason, you know, we as a council have looked at ways to reduce the number of houses that are getting approved.
R5.
We certainly are not in control of people selling property and doing with it what it's zoned for. However, by taking away R5 and by the restrictions and the agreements that we strike with the larger developments for the last, at least, four to five years, we have been aggressive in finding ways to reduce the numbers. I think it is always imperative to say, me paying my taxes on my home does not cover the cost of the services I receive. The commercial taxes help offset, but residential does not cover. I need for that to be very clear. Residential taxes do not cover the services provided to each home. Therefore, you know, we do have to look at that. We do. But we also have to be cognizant that, you know, we need businesses in commerce in our town, not just for service, but for what they do to balance out the needs of our community.
Shontae, for actual payment, homeowners, whatever decisions made, won't be responsible for paying this until 2021.
Correct.
Their taxes-
Is this, is this the best that will go out on the tax bills in October 2020?
Okay, so it will be prior to year end that they'll be due, okay?
Okay.
Just making clarity. Because the other part, while COVID is significantly impacting a lot of our decisions here, honestly, the presidential election makes a big decision. Our business, my business, but I'm in tanks every year right around the presidential election, and then we'll come back, no matter who's in.
Regardless of who's running.
Yeah, it, it's just the security of who's in place and then moving forward. So I, I think that makes it even harder to make this decision at the time of an election because, you know, for me, I do see our businesses going down for a few months before stability gets, and, you know, the, the new norms, whatever that is, is in place. So it does make it challenging. But I'm, I agree with you 100%. We do have to increase, yeah. Doesn't have to be huge, but we do have to start making a standard step increase on a regular basis, start keeping the livelihood of the town of Fort Mill at the same standard we're all used to. So, well, agreed. Timing may not be best right now. I'm in favor of staying to what staff has proposed at 76-
75.2.
Thank you, ma'am. 75.2 millage at this time, with a definite rebook next year.
And what we're talking about is a millage rollback.
Yeah.
Okay, correct.
To keep it at the same point.
The one thing about the presidential election, it may be even worse.
Maybe worse, maybe better.
Yeah.
If on Facebook that an asteroid may be hitting. So, I mean, you, there's no telling.
That's my phrase.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, in 2020, there's no telling where it will go. And I don't want to get into presidential debate. Things may, our, things will be changing in some way, form, whether it's state, federal, changes continue to be made on a regular basis. That's life, whether it's election or not. But the economy right now is hurting us all, and COVID is significantly impacting those decisions we have to make.
Do we have, do we have the numbers from the A-Tax and H-Tax, and how that's going to be affected if we roll this thing back?
Does it change?
So different.
I don't, it's a different taxation. It's not, those aren't affected by the millage.
All right. But Jamie, given the report that staff provided, H-Tax in June was the highest it has been all year. A-Tax accommodations was horrible, which you can imagine people just not staying in hotels. People aren't coming to the businesses to visit.
Care rents is an open-
Yeah. Accommodations was really low, but hospitality tax was the highest it has been all year for the town of Fort Mill. So that's a positive thing of the economy going in a good direction for us. And hopefully, some of these small businesses coming through this, and hopefully are starting to turn around and come out of this economic crisis.
I think the, even though it's the highest all year, you look to the fact that we've all been quarantined or semi-quarantined for six months. I don't know how that June compares to June of last year. I, I just was happy to see that it, it was at least stable and moving in the right direction. And I attribute that to the creativity of a lot of our businesses to alter how they serve and make it safe for everyone, so.
And those of us who don't like to cook.
Yeah.
I cook lea, that I use all the time.
So, and thanks to consumers for continuing to find ways to support our local businesses. I think that's been an incredible piece of this.
Yeah, I know that was coming by news, Lauren. We had looked at, could we put on pause for a little while during the pandemic, and we're unable to come up with a way of trying to help in that way. So I think if the millage is the way we can do it, then we should.
I do think there are always restricts, restrictions to how we take in money, how we raise money, and how we spend money that oftentimes we don't talk about.
Yes.
You know, it, it seems pretty simple, but it is very complex. And thank you, Shontae, for being our guide. It's a forest, not a front yard. Thank you. Being an information discussion item, I guess we don't really take a vote in, in that instance, but I can ask how we need to give direction. And personally, I think we need to do the rollback and, and not increase taxes in a time of COVID. So I guess, is there any council member that objects to that?
I do not disagree.
And to Shontae's point, this is not official until we vote to approve the budget in two sessions. So I, I would say in what you are meeting to publish, that we will embrace the rollback because of COVID and the situation that our community and our world is in right now. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would ask staff, Davy, if we can make sure we have a communication piece that kind of spells out what was available to us and the decision that we made or that we are looking at doing for our budget, just so there's no doubt. Again, to Gwen's point, there's a lot of confusion sometimes with what we are able to do and not do. And I think it's prudent for us to be sure we have a clear and concise message, the direction that this council is trying to move forward with. Thank you.
We also need to make sure that people don't look on this as a tax reduction.
Correct. Absolutely.
Which some of them are.
Yes, I, I, Larry's point is extremely valid, and I think that it will behoove us as council members and staff, as we move through the finalization of our budget and we vote twice, that we remember this is not a tax decrease nor an increase, that we're treading water to continue to operate at the very best level that we can on the same level of funding due to COVID. So, thank you, Larry. That's a really good point. Further discussion on this item? Thank you, council members and staff. Shontae, as always, thank you. There are no old business items. There are no new business items. However, we do have an executive session item. In executive session, we will discuss negotiations incident to the sale of town-owned property. Please note that council may take action on executive session items listed on the agenda when we come back into public session. However, it is important to note that we do not vote in executive session. So with that, I need a motion for us to move to executive session.
I'll make that motion, that we move to executive session.
Thank you, Trudy. Do I have a second? And Larry has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, thank you, and we will return to public session shortly. All right, welcome. I will entertain a motion to come back into public session.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor to return to public session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right. Let the record reflect that no vote was taken during executive session. We would like to take action on executive session, however. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff on the pursuit of the sale of the property at 215 Main Street.
Okay, I have a motion on the table for staff to pursue putting 214 Main Street for sale.
215.
215, excuse me. We don't have 214. 215 Main Street, otherwise known as the Sprat Building, on the market. Do I have a second?
I'm second.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those nay? Thank you very much. We have one nay. Mr. Huntley has voted nay. And that will take care of our agenda for today. Ronnie, do you have anything for the good of the whole? Chris Moody?
Good to see y'all.
Isn't it, though? Isn't it, though? Jamie?
It's good to see everybody.
It's wonderful to see you too.
Good to see you, staff. Yeah, I've missed, I've missed you.
We've missed you as well. Glad to have you back. Trudy?
I'm good, thank you.
Lisa?
I'm good.
Larry?
I'd like to note the passing of former councilman Charlie Boyett.
That was definitely on, on my list. You know, the earthquake from North Carolina, the earthquake from Rock Hill, you know, I, I can't tell you how many of Fort Mill's native pop- I, I can't tell you how many of Fort Mill's, uh, native population have passed in the last several weeks. It is, it is just heartbreaking, uh, to think of the loss of people that were part of our foundation. Uh, the building and maintaining of Fort Mill can be attributed to Hazel Leps passing, to, uh, Charlie Boyett passing. There, there's a number of Fort Mill people, both young and old, um, that have left us. And I, I know that council collectively, um, offers condolences, prayers, sympathy, and, you know, we all are, um, sad and mourning the loss of the people that got us here. So, uh, Charlie was, uh, an enigma. He was definitely a legend in this town. Uh, never was at a loss for words, how's that? Um, you know, just a little powerhouse of a man that, um, was very good to me personally. Uh, played tennis with him when I was a kid and yes, he would hit you. Um, he, he, he was just, uh, his love of Fort Mill was obvious and he wore it well. So, um, was all those that got us here. Also would like to, um, offer heartfelt best wishes for those returning to the classroom today. Our teachers are returning to the classroom and our students will return on the thirty-first. Um, these are, are different towns. These are challenges that none of us ever expected, uh, to face. And I, I do think for those that work to take care of our youngest, uh, those nurses that go in and doctors every day and take care of us and our, our folks in assisted living, I don't have a day that I'm not thankful for them. So, um, everybody continue to please take care of yourself, thereby taking care of others. So with that, um, I would, um, like to hear a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion for adjourn.
I have, uh, a motion, do I have a second? Have a second from Mr. Moody? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed. Have a great week, everybody.